Alright, um, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this September meeting of the Valdosta Alliance County Zoning District Appeals to Order. Everyone who's attendance, please make sure and sign in on the attendance sheet at the back of the room. Before we begin, I will explain the process for the meeting. I will call each case on a case-by-case name and case number. The city or county representing the staff will come to the lectern to present the facts of the case. After presentation, the board may or may not ask the staff questions. Once the board has heard the case and asked all questions necessary of the staff, we will move to hearing from either the applicant or the applicant's representation. After hearing from the applicant, we will hear from anyone else who wishes to express support for the case. Finally, we will hear from anyone who wishes to express opposition to the case. Anyone addressing the board will please come to the lectern and give their name and address for the record. For clarity and respect, we ask that only the person at the lectern address the board and that the audience give them an uninterrupted chance to be heard. If there is important information that you feel we need to consider, then please come to the lectern when it is your turn and you are called. In the interest of time, though, the board asks that you keep your comments brief and to the point. Please do not come to the lectern only to restate the same information we have already been given by someone else. Once the board has had the chance to hear from all sides on the matter and ask any questions we feel are necessary, then we will render a decision. If we do not feel that the necessary information is available to render a decision today, then we may decide to table the case for the next meeting. Please be aware that this board is here today only to address various applications to zoning codes for Alliance County and the city of Valdosta. This is the only matter on which this board has been given the power to render a decision. We cannot and do not have the power to address any other matters that are not covered by the zoning codes of Alliance County or the city of Valdosta. Now, uh, we will call the first item, VAR 2019-10, Thomas Gregory Lee, 4349 McMullen Drive.
For the record, this is variance application VAR 2019-10 for Mr. Thomas Gregory Lee Lay, excuse me, uh, who resides at 4349 McMullen Drive. Mr. Lay is asking for a variance to table 5.02.01D8 as it pertains to the side yard setback, uh, setbacks for the cesspool structure. Mr. Lay has purchased a truck camper that he has parked on the northern portion of his lot. Um, on the northern portion of his lot is also where he has his parking drive, let's see if I got it, uh, yeah, his parking driveway as well.
Can I tip it also so we can see it a little better?
You can swing that.
Thank you.
Be careful with that, Thomas, so it don't fall.
Oh, much better.
Thank you. And, uh, according to, according to Mr. Lay, uh, the house was built more so towards the northern property line. Um, his camper currently sits, I think he said about six feet up of the actual property line, the north property line. He wants to do, uh, 640 square feet open metal carport in which to house the, um, truck camper, um, which is why he's here today to request, uh, a 14-foot variance because the UODC requires, um, a side yard of 20 feet within an R1 zoning district. And thus, uh, that's our request, a request for a variance of 14 feet to the side yard setback in order for him to be able to erect his, uh, open metal carport in order to house his camper. He has, um, talked to several of the neighbors, they, I can sign his letter of intent, um, and he's even willing to, he said, should, um, the current neighbor ever move away and the new folks come in if they did not like it? He said that he would be willing to move.
Any questions for staff?
Did the parking yard to the north sign this later into?
That, that B B. I'm right next door.
Yes.
And the only reason it ain't there, I mean, we went on vacation right before she pulled up.
Anything else, any other questions of staff?
There, there.
Yeah.
You said that.
Okay.
And the white line that you've got marked on there, that is the closer proclamation of the property.
Yeah, it's a straight on the middle of the stall. That, that, the white line is property line and the orange is, is what I suppose at that time, it was actually closer and I moved it, uh, you know, this, this way, in a little bit, but that's, the driveway is in the way a very good. If I did do the 20 feet, it'd be pretty much in the middle of the driveway.
Alright. Thank you, Deborah. Um, would the, uh, the owner's representation like to speak on behalf?
She pretty much fell it out. I mean, I, there was a bunch of talk about can you do it on the other side and a wellhouse is on the other side and there, without putting another driveway in, you got permission for all that, of course, that was the, the best route, uh, to represent.
The five, the, I'm sorry, the six-foot setback, that is going to be to the closest support pole or is that gonna be to the side of the camper?
It's closest support pole. That, that orange line is what the building would be, that where the, the front corner as to where I had it measured would be right there. And actually, the way the property line goes, the building would be here and it gets further away from the property line on the back of the building because they're in that angle. So, it may be eight or nine feet back in the back, I didn't measure that.
I just wanted to make certain that you were figuring six feet to the side of the camper with the slide out, which by the time you put the building in, it would be potentially like five feet or something like that.
I got it, yeah.
And then if, if we granted you six and you built the five, now you're in violation.
No, it'll be, it'll be six. I moved everything for that. That picture, I hadn't had moved it, I hadn't moved it yet, but I, I actually have the, uh, the orange line under the slide, I get what you're saying, the whole thing is moved over and it's six feet, the building will be six feet from that.
And six feet is the bare minimum you've got to have to try to get it where you want it without obstructing other use on the driveway.
That's right, that's why I marked out on the driveway how much of my driveway I'm gonna have to cut out to even do that. That's, the whole thing is built toward the north side of the property, more so than the south.
Okay, um, anybody else here in, who'd like to express some support?
I don't have any objections, so you can put it on the line for all I care. I don't have, I have no problem with it yet. I'm planning on being there a long, long time.
Can we get your name and address for the record?
Dean Dashar, yeah, on 4371, I'm on that, I'm on that house right next door there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, I take, there's nobody here in opposition? Um, or is there any contact in your office about this?
No, sir.
Okay. Alright, unless anybody has, anybody else has any questions? Would we like to make a motion?
I'd like to motion to grant the request that presented, citing criteria D as primary.
We have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor? Alright, unanimous?
Alright. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Alright, we will move on to other business. Uh, I think everybody's got a copy of the meeting minutes or has considered copying the meeting minutes. Anybody seen changes or errors to meet your interest? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to motion to accept the minute that presented.
We have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, you see this? Okay, alright. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
I'll understand, I'll look here, I guess.
Alright, um, additional business, uh, we have before us, which we discussed last time, was an attendance record, um, just to go forward for members on board, uh, this is what's been drafted up and looks good to me.
If you don't like the format, let me know, I'm open to ideas, comments.
Is this different from the one that we had previously adopted that I sent the minutes from our adoption?
The, um, are we talking about the attendance call?
Yes.
Okay, um, I did not read what you said. I have to work through my email.
I do have a question. Um, are the other boards, uh, that accepted attendance policy and if so, is it similar to this one?
Yes, we have other, we have other city boards, I won't speak for other county boards, but we have other city boards that have a similar policy, that if the zoning board appeals in this other town, we can.
I think it'd be wise if we, uh, compare.
Okay.
For acceptance.
Apparently city boards or, or county boards?
Uh, why not vote, you know, absent is absent, present is present.
I've got a question. Tracy, I'm, I'm a court lawyer. I'm not a office lawyer. I'm in court every day in Hailier. Today I was hung up, uh, and I, I left there probably 30 minutes ago. Some days I get stuck in there a while and I can't really tell you, I can tell you, hey, I got court adjourned and I think I'll be doing, the procedure I follow and that is just letting you know as soon as I know that I'm going to be stuck in court, is that okay? Or, or do, you know, if I need to resign because I, my schedule is too bad in the court, you know, I, I can do whatever you want.
I will open that up to board discussion. Um, I will tell you that I've been here 11, 11 years and we think you miss us without a law. Getting a court is important. I'll open that up to board discussion.
I think in general in the past, the way it's been handled is that, um, any business-related, you know, as long as we can meet a court, any business-related reasons for needing to be, um, absent was excused. Is that, you were the chairman longer than, much longer than I was, is that the policy?
When, when this all came about, just as a general information to everybody, there are, I forget how many, 10, 11, 12, 13 different committees or commissions?
22.
Is it 22? Okay. In all the years that I've been on zoning board of appeals, there was one instance where we didn't have a court, which is pretty darn brutal, I think. And at that point, we actually had less members after we had that one situation, we actually got the city and the county to add one more member apiece to give us a better shot at a court. We were not, the zoning board of appeals was not one of the, uh, groups that was targeted by the city and the county saying we need to do a better job of policing. There were, there was at least two other, um, commissions or whatever that were relatively routinely shorthanded. And when this all started happening and I did a little bit of research talking to the city and the county, they were very pleased with what we had done and it was not aimed at us, but they felt like all of them should be under the same umbrella and I said I totally agree. And when I asked at that point about a chart of keeping up with it, that was not something that they felt like was real important, especially for us, and that's why we never did start doing an actual chart.
In all honesty, Ms. Teresa, our city clerk, I kind of, she let me borrow this format for us. Um, she's kept an attendance chart spreadsheet for like a go over for the last two or three years or so. She did not have a current 2019 one, so she let me her format, let me update it to reflect 2019 stats for like that one. So that's where this combination came from.
Hey, Tom, would you?
No, no, go ahead.
Oh, I want to say as far as my opinion and all of this, I, I really don't understand the reason for the 10th policy. I mean, far as, you know, this board's return, I can't speak for inexperience or in knowledge from other boards on from what I'm used to knowing. Uh, I don't particularly see a reason for having one because there's still a lot of great areas, it's more than just saying, um, will, will, won't be, except what's excused, what's not excused, those are still great areas as well, because we say, hey, this is related and, oh, by definition, what is business related, what is, is my definition of business and your definition of business the same thing. So, I think we open up, we open up Pandora's box that I don't think that's, that's necessary. I mean, there have been some times in the past where I've listened to you say it's business related, but if no one ever asked me, you know, the reason for your absence, then of course I would never have a chance to tell them, hey, it was this reason or that reason. So I'm just only just saying, and that's why I was asking about other boards and what they have and, you know, what was, you know, some of their, uh, ideals, but me personally, I just let it be known, I don't really think we need one. All of us here are professional individuals, I think if we could make it, we would be here.
And I understand, I understand your point, I agree with you, okay, but the bottom line was, there was a particular board that was unable to do, unable to do any business several meetings in a row because their membership didn't show up.
Was it this board?
No, it was not. It was another, it was another entity board. Um, if you don't show up, we can't have a meeting, he can't hear, he can't hear the situation about his tax, bottom line. And I understand, I would like, I would like to have the thought that if, any, I understand flat tires, I understand sick kids, I understand work, I don't think any of us is gonna argue, but there's a point, there's a balance where if you're meeting, if you're missing eight meetings a year, you don't need to be on the board. Uh, and where that balance is, I don't know that it's for me to call.
Correct.
But there's, there's a balance and honestly, with this particular board, these folks weren't coming and there were folks like him, there were citizens who weren't getting their needs met because this board didn't show up.
We've been having this problem, or we didn't have a forum?
We, we have, we've had that once in 11 years.
Okay, so that's, that's impactful, correct.
You're correct, you're correct, but we were encouraged, speaking from a city standpoint only, we were encouraged to have our boards adopt an attendance call, so if it became an issue, we can address it, hopefully, in a tactical manner.
Okay, uh, now, like I say, on my opinion, but if you, if you was, uh, appointed by the city council or was appointed by the county commission, that should still be within the power of those governing bodies. I mean, like, if you don't, if you don't show up in attendance for, you know, for whoever appointed you, then you best believe that when it comes time for your appointment, they will remember your attendance policy and they'll say, hey, well, you know, I remember it on his record, you know, he, this was excused or unexcused or whatever the case may be. I'm only just saying though, I mean, like, is it, is it something that we should take up with the city council and county commission, like, is it something that they may want to speak on because, you know, like, like for instance, this year, if, if our 10th policy is pretty much impactful as far as having a forum in the last 11 years, then maybe this is for the, the, the board that, that didn't have, you know, that didn't meet the forum criteria. I'm only just saying, I just think that because a lot of us, you know, everybody here is professional, everybody here, you know, uh, well, like individuals, I just, I just feel like, does this apply to our board, that's the only thing, and I'm just trying to understand.
In all, in all honesty, currently, as you said, it was what was adopted by the board granted in 2013, but this was what was adopted by the zoning board.
Okay, my question.
And we, we were, it was sent down as a request, but it was also, uh, you know, we expect all boards and commissions to adopt a policy and that's why ours agrees what it reads, this is, and this is patterned after several of the other ones.
I have Gretchen, I have Gretchen's email right here that concluded the, what was read in and, uh, and what was considered. It looks to me like our plan, our attendance policy was modeled after, um, the Greater Alliance Planning Commission, Valdosta Historic Preservation Commission, and Central Valdosta Development Authority. Um, all three of those, their attendance policies were looked at. Two of them are basically three consecutive, uh, regular meetings failing to attend and you're asked to be removed from the board. Um, Central Valdosta Development Authority is a little bit different in that it's basically you have to attend 90% of all meetings, but, so it sounds like ours is within, is well within the, the norm of the other boards, um, and the other commissions, uh, and, you know, we were asked to, uh, to adopt some sort of an attendance policy, um, you know, uh, I think, while it has not been an issue in the past, um, and I think this board has been, you know, everybody's put quite a bit of effort in attending this board over the years, um, you know, we don't know what might happen in the future and who might be appointed to the board in the future, and I think it's a, just as a safety measure, you know, it doesn't hurt anything to have a basic attendance policy. And as far as just the record goes, the only reason I brought it up was, you know, in the past couple of meetings when this originally got brought up was simply that we, we have an attendance policy, but we never had a record anywhere of the actual attendance of people. And, you know, when people are appointed to the board, questions come up as to, you know, whether they have been attending or not, and if we don't have a record to answer that question for the city council or the county commissioners who were considering that person for appointment or reappointment, you know, it would help to give them, mound of what was, it would help to give them that information. This was not intended as a, as a, uh, stick or a carrot, it was simply, you know, just a measure of keeping a record, that's all. So, I, you know, that's, that's the only reason I brought that up originally.
But in the only reason I provided it to the board as a whole is because I knew what was gonna be up for discussion and I wanted more eyes on the board.
Tracy, I'm, I'm, yes, um, we haven't had a problem with this board, but I think maybe the reason we haven't had a problem is because we do have rules and there's a subtleness there to remind each and every one of us if, let's say, you know, we're kind of busy one day and we think, gosh, I, I might just skip today, this is volunteer work anyway, it keeps everybody in check and we all need that. I mean, everybody needs some sort of rules and, and checks to go by. And I think it's important to remember that our main goal is here for the applicants. Um, so many cases we've heard that have been controversial, um, we've had people that have gathered their support teams or their opposition teams and there might be 50 people here, and if we don't have enough people showing up, those people have to come back. And I don't think it's, it's doing justice to the citizens that we're supposed to be hearing the cases of. They pay a lot of money for the application for variance and it's important that we show up unless it's a real good reason not to.
And in all honesty, that's one of the reasons why I called you, get nine times out of 10 the day before the meeting, is so I could remind y'all, and then number two, I've got a, a reasonable idea whether we're gonna have a forum or not. I mean, if I'm going to, if you say, yes, I'm gonna be there and the rest of you aren't, I think that would be good.
I want to chime in and say I agree 100% with Nancy, the reason why we're here is to serve the citizens of this community. And today we have one applicant and sometimes we have five or seven and a room full of people and it's our obligation, um, as appointees to do our public service and come to these meetings. Also, I think on this board and on the planning commission, the people that serve our local boards have an obligation to go and visit the sites and to understand what it is that they're looking at and not just come to this meeting and say, la di da, I looking up my papers and yes or no, because when you sometimes see, you drive around the neighborhoods and you see, go, oh yeah, I see why that's a problem, or I see that that's not a problem. And we're appointed by the governing bodies and the governing bodies said to us, they wanted us to have a content policy, so we had one. And, one more thing, uh, we have a forum because some people very rarely miss. I can't think of maybe about two meetings that I had the chair when I was vice chair was down missed. Um, I don't think Max missed meetings since he's been the chair. So, you know, we take this seriously and it shouldn't just fall upon five of us to make sure that we're always here to have a forum. It should fall upon all eight of us to make sure that we're all always here and offer the best decision possible.
I'd like to get back to what we've kind of got transferred here and, and that is, I, I, I want to disclose to everybody in this board that I've got the worst attendance policy than anybody in this group, and what I'm telling you is, I get stuck in court, it happens often. Uh, July 2nd, I was in New York City because my daughter graduated from Auburn and I took it to New York City. Uh, August 6th, I was stuck in court, June 4th, I was stuck in court. I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head the other two, but very likely I got stuck in court. I'm not at the bar, I'm not, uh, playing golf, I work from and every day. And if I'm not here, it's because of one of those two reasons. But if it's not enough, what I'm saying is, I'm glad we signed. Y'all are really good attenders, everybody else here is really good, uh, but I see I'm not, I'm not so good and what I'm telling you is, I am glad we signed.
I don't think that's anybody's intention.
When, when, when I got this and sat down and looked at it, printed it off on the computer and I was going top crazy either during the meeting or after the meeting, it's a little bit skewed, if you want to use that word, because the way it says, and I'm talking about the graph, not, not the policy, the graph. The unexcused, let's see. The unexcused absence, not an absence. So maybe we ought to have a fourth color or something, or maybe put some shade lines through it that says John was not here, but he was in court and it was excused, so it doesn't look like John is out doing whatever and it doesn't matter to him, or whoever else if it ever came up and somebody else's graph or chart started looking real funny and we'd have a better understanding that, yeah, he didn't make that meeting, but it was because he had an excused absence because family situation or employment situation. because family situation or employment situation or medical situation. And the, the graph doesn't have to say why it was unexcused or excused, it just needs to differentiate.
Excused versus unexcused. Is that something you'd like me to go back to the start of the year and?
If it's not a huge problem for you to create a fourth color or in case of black and white printers, I'd say maybe a hash mark in it that says this, he was not here, but he was excused and if it's.
I believe that, it's not a problem.
Chairman, I will request that or?
I, I agree one hundred percent, I think that's a good point.
That, that would happen.
Okay, so do we want to approve it based on that or do we want to wait and see the, the next iteration of this before we vote? Okay.
Now, I want to say something before we even go through it. My thing is, when we approve something, whether I actually have to approve it, you still see some gray areas, someone say, help, I want to help, maybe possibly, hopefully, it's too, it's still too many gray areas, I think we should do our due diligence and we should review what everyone else has, they may have had these same questions. See, and me personally, as a business owner, I'm twenty-four hours a day, but three businesses run twenty-four hours, I think it's like, you see, I understand that, hey, let's not just jump into something that's still got a couple leaky holes in the boat. Let's make sure we determine the material of the boat we're using before we build a boat. But I'm only just saying, let's just wait, why am I so quick to jump into an attendance policy?
Just, just so we're clear, first of all, all, right now, all we're talking about is the record of the attendance. You know, we weren't talking about going back and redoing the attendance policy at this point. I think if we, if we are going to open the attendance policy itself up to completely redoing it, then I, you know, obviously we can do that if everybody would like to go back and, and go back through that. All, all, all this was addressing was just the recording of it. So, you know, again, I think that, you know, if, if we want to open the attendance policy up and, and, and readdress that all over again, I, you know.
And that's what I'm thinking of.
Policy, the procedure to do that, but we need a motion to, we probably need a motion to, to open that and so I, you know.
And I, and I'm just, I'm just wanting to stay lodged on this, like, yeah, I'm talking about attendance policy, I'm not really, I'm not even talking about the roster. I don't think I, I want my business on here whether I was in court or whether I was in the smokehouse, I just don't, I don't see that, just like Nancy, this is 2013. Okay, this says this was adopted 2013 with no signatures, how is it technically adopted if there's no signatures or approval? I mean, that's just one gray area there, we never signed off, is this signed, is this signed?
It's recorded in the meeting minutes of the, of the procedure of the, the meeting when it was adopted.
And I can be on the questions for now.
And we, and we signed for this?
It was, it was adopted by the board, I don't remember the vote, but it was adopted by the board. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was 2012 or 13.
November.
Yeah, it was adopted, we, we looked at it, there was discussion of it, I don't remember, I think we tweaked it a little bit and then we adopted it.
But this is the version, this is the official version of what's been adopted.
Okay, well, let me ask you, if this was adopted and why are we even, if it's already within our, you know, our documents, I'm not, not wondering what, what are we actually doing now, are we, I mean?
We're addressing this, that, that was the, the record of it is all we were addressing. We weren't actually addressing the attendance policy itself, although, you know, some questions got brought up about that in the last meeting and Gretchen graciously emailed that record out so that everybody could have a copy of it and be reminded of what the actual policy was. But the, the initial motion was to add just simply a record keeping to the attendance policy itself, that was all.
It was not made in to open up a county board or a state or anything.
You didn't open it, I did, I'm the one that called it up.
It was by the copy of the, of the year we charged and purely for information purposes only.
Do we know what the vote was for the adoption of the policy 2013?
No, but I can email it, I can email it without writing it back to you.
All right, that's what we need to have with the president, that, another thing, 2013, the bridge on, on eighty-four.
It doesn't matter what the vote was, it was approved. So when one person said no or everybody said yes, it doesn't matter, we approved.
Well, let me ask you.
And you don't change it every time you change a member out for another member, I mean?
Okay, this is my, this is my question, this is my, this is my question. If it was adopted, landed by 2013, okay, now it's what, seven years, almost seven years now? Okay, I don't even know if that bridge on eighty-four is done and maybe it was a problem with folks getting from the other side of town, from off of River Street, I, I just don't, I just don't know, it's still kind of gray areas still vague, I just think, like I'm saying, we should look at what other boards adopted and see what, what do they have here or don't have here and what was the reason for it.
Okay, maybe this was the, would you like to make a motion to open the attendance policy up to be reconsidered?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll say it.
Okay, all those in favor? We have two, all those against? We have three, four, or four? And that's the quickest way to expedite the discussion out. Would somebody like to make a motion on the attendance policy roster? As, as discussed with, with the changes that were recommended?
I will make a motion to adopt the graph, red sheet with the addition of the fourth category.
Okay.
And.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor? All those against? We have one against and five, four. Okay, motion passes.
Is this something, is someone, do y'all want to say in long stretch monthly, do you want to see it orderly, how often?
Those are all great choices.
I find it.
All great choices.
I think that the chairman needs to see it.
Yeah, I think it's just a, it's just a record keeping, that's all it is.
We have that information in the minutes of the meeting, we can make our own, we can tell it.
All right, any other business that we need to discuss?
I got a quick question, so on the court, it says variants may be granted upon finding by the ZDA that all of the following conditions have been met and it goes through this A through J. But for so long, we've always said.
That's for the county, those are for county.
For the county, you only have to meet one and for the city, you have to meet them all. The opposite, one is, you only have to meet one.
County, you have to meet one.
Mm-hmm, the city, you have to meet them all.
Right, okay, when you, when we're discussing it and I'm here and jumping in. The county has to have picked one. It doesn't mean that voters didn't apply, but you pick one and gives the motion prompt.
Okay.
The city, when you, when we make the motion, we just either adopt or deny.
We don't accept or deny.
Give the basis.
And we don't give the basis because it's already in there that it theoretically is supposed to meet every one of these before we can vote to accept.
Okay.
And it's, this has been something in, for, for many years, but after they adopted the ULDC and the city and the county total separated, a little people call that, before then, it was almost identical. And then when they adopted ULDC, it made it a little bit more tenuous because the, the city wanted to meet everything and the county said, if laws that meets one of these, we're good.
Right. Any other business? All right, thank you all very much, we are adjourned.